And we're live. Unmute. Good evening and welcome to the November 10, 2020, Meeting of the Stowe Board of Selectmen. I'm Tom Ryan, Chair, and here we have the entire board. Jim Selby, Courtney Fresher, Megan Berch-Michael, and Ellen Sturgis. And we also have our Town Administrator Denise Demkoski and Maureen McKeon, our Administrative Assistant. And I will start out tonight with public input. What a surprise, Linda. If you unmute, we will let you speak.
Thank you. I want to tell everybody, all the voters in Stowe, thank you for turning out and thank you for helping us get through this very stressful period. And 88% of the voters turned out and I couldn't be happier. I'm exhausted, but couldn't be happier. And thank you. And thank you for all your support, everybody coming out. And we had a lot of volunteers and I owe everybody a great bit of gratitude. So, thank you. That's it.
Do we have any other public input?
Go ahead, Courtney, go ahead.
I would like to mention that Andrea Snow, who has been a member of the Conservation Commission for, I believe, seven years, is resigning and moving to the Cape where her family, some of her family lives. And I just would like to say what a pleasure it was to be on the Conservation Commission with Andrea. And she was, her professional background made her an excellent chair and she was both collegial with those of us on the commission, but also I felt like she was excellent at shepherding the process whenever there was any anxiety on the part of an applicant. She was very welcoming and kind and generally it was just such a pleasure to serve with her, um, with her.
Can I just echo what Courtney said? I've come across Andy several times being married to the Conservation Coordinator. I've always had the impression that she's a very solid, reliable board member, very good with members of the public, and I know from Kathy's perspective and from others should be greatly missed.
I might be taking your thunder, but I just, to Linda and Deb, I just want to thank you guys. You did an incredible job and it was, you know, I was involved with some of the pre-work and just saw how organized you guys were and how smoothly everything ran. Obviously, it doesn't happen by accident and I just, you know, yes, it was great to have that amazing turnout, but, you know, had there not been such good planning and coordination, it would have been much more chaotic. So, thank you, Linda.
I wanted to echo what Ellen was saying, but I'm sure you're going to say the same thing.
No, I was only going to say bad things. Do we have any other public input? Seeing none, I will move on. And yes, you guys did steal my thunder.
Sorry.
But so really, thank you to the Tom Clerk's office and all of the folks who helped out with it. And the other people I'd like to thank are the voters for coming out.
Yep.
You know, it's a historic election this year and we had a historic turnout and thank you very much to all the voters. Tomorrow, November 11, 2020, is Veterans Day. Veterans Day was originally known as Armistice Day and is observed to honor our military veterans and celebrates the service of all U.S. military veterans. I'd like to thank all our veterans for their service to our country today and every day and wish them all a happy Veterans Day. To honor the Stowe area veterans, the Rotary Club of Neshoba Valley is having a drive-through lunch tomorrow, November 11, from 11:30 to 1:00 p.m. at the First Parish Church of Stowe and Acton on Great Road in Stowe. Pre-registration is required by contacting the Rotary Club. It may be a little late at this point, but I thought I'd mention it. The lunch is sponsored by the Rotary Club of Neshoba Valley, the Friends of the Stowe Council on Aging, the Workers Credit Union, Shaw's in Stowe, and Honey Pot Hill Orchards. Thanks to all the folks involved in it for honoring our veterans. And also, in honor of Veterans Day, the town offices are closed tomorrow, so no one will answer the phones. One of the other things, usually we see some folks promoting the Stowe Gobbler about this time every year. And this year, it's going to be totally virtual. It's the 15th year and it's been a great event for quite a while. Information can be found on the Recreation Department website. One of the things I do want to stress is that this is a virtual race. So, please do not show up to Stowe Community Park and, you know, try to get together and all that. I'm sure some people will try to show up there, but please don't, you know? Stay spread apart and stay safe. And that's all I have. The chairman's comments today. So, now we have a couple of appointments. First one is for the Stowe Council on Aging. And we have Roger Zimmerman, who has expressed interest in moving to full member of the COA Board. And he has Denise's recommendation. And I see that we have Roger on. Hello, Roger, how are you today?
Doing well, thank you.
Thank you for stepping forward.
It's a small change to go from a not voting member to a voting member, but it makes you feel like you're accomplishing a bit.
I hear they double your pay.
I'm looking forward to that.
I'm sure, I'm sure. Would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself? And you can go from there.
Okay, I'm tired. I've previously been a biologist and then for a while a path lawyer. And I've been living in Stowe for 18 years.
Well, thank you for stepping forward. It's always appreciated when we have volunteers. That's what keeps the town running. Do we have any questions or comments from?
Yours is Allison, I'm just saying, Tom, Allison's on there too.
Allison? All right.
Yep.
Allison.
Hello, everyone. I just wanted to highly recommend Roger. He's been a wonderful associate member, very active and involved in the COA, and we're very excited to have him get appointed to become a full-pledged board member. He's been very involved as an associate. He's also a regular volunteer for the COA, and we really appreciate all the hard work and getting back to the community and helping us. So, we highly recommend him. We're very excited for tonight.
All right.
Thank you.
Courtney.
I'd just like to add that I have seen Roger in action on the Community Preservation Committee, and he's also involved there and makes cogent remarks and is happy to do that, which is not always easy to find somebody to serve on an additional committee. So, thank you, Roger.
Any other comments from the board? In that case, I will entertain a motion.
I will move to appoint Roger Zimmerman to the Council on Aging for an indefinite term.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Roger.
Thank you, Roger.
Thank you, Roger.
Thank you, Roger.
Thank you, Roger.
Congratulations.
Next, we have an appointment for a new member to the Economic Development, EDIC, Economic Development and Industrial Commission. Denise has also recommended the appointment, and the candidate is David Elkins. Is David on?
I'm here.
Hello, David, how are you?
David's in the dark.
Yep.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you and it looks like you must be hanging out outside.
No, it's a dark room. Not quite.
Not quite. Well, thank you for stepping forward. Would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself?
I've lived here since 96, three kids, two in the school system. I own various businesses. I was in the restaurant business for a long time, in the wine and spirits industry for a long time, and I actually do financial planning for New York Life now, so I'm always looking at forward. And I do planning for a lot of people. I have quite a few clients here in Stowe. I used to run the Neshoba Lacrosse League. I was the president of that league for seven or eight years. I know a lot of people. And I'm very familiar with Kevin Whalen, who was the chairman of that group, and we've had multiple discussions. My big concern is the Lower Village and businesses there. And certainly, this is before COVID, but certainly now, more than ever, how these businesses are going to survive and what that town center is going to look like moving forward. I have great concern with that new development in Maynard and what that's going to do to some of the businesses in Stowe, especially the fitness center and the grocery store, and what the town is able to do to maybe incentivize those businesses to stay. Landlord, I'm concerned about the landlord. I guess I do go to the fitness center and I understand that they really haven't given him much of a break, and certainly his business is down. Just hate to see those vacancies in the town and that shopping plaza. It would be, I think, a bad look to the town. I won't drive into, you know, apple country, idyllic Stowe, and coming in and seeing all these closed businesses in the town center. I think that should be every, every resident's concern, people drive up here.
Hi, David, I'm Megan Berch-Michael. I used to chair the Lower Village Revitalization Subcommittee, and so I wanted to let you know, if you weren't aware, tonight they actually are, the planning board is meeting virtually, and you might find it interesting to go there, meeting with the consultant that they had hired to look at the Lower Village development. And I think it would be just an interesting, if you have a few minutes, to sort of hop over to that one. We had, there are a couple of members of the EDIC who are also on the Lower Village, and I absolutely echo your sentiments. I think it's great that we have more people involved in the EDIC, and I thank you for stepping up. But yeah, I think that would be something that if you were interested in, I know that it's coming up on their agenda probably around 7:30, 7:45 tonight.
Okay, we'll do that.
Thanks.
My, it's my understanding that the current EDIC members voted four, four zero in favor of appointing. David, so?
They did. Unanimously.
Yes. Are there any other comments from the board?
Thank you for stepping forward.
Thank you, David. Sounds great.
And in that case, I'll take, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint David Elkins to the Economic Development and Industrial Commission for the remainder of a five-year term expiring June 30, 2023.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you, David.
Thanks, David.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night. You as well.
You as well.
Next, we have the Highway Department up, and the superintendent is looking to hire a per diem tree and tree grounds worker and snowplow driver. And Denise has reviewed the application, recommends the appointment. Steve, would you like to say anything?
If you can board, if you finalize, if you're still per diem on board for the winter snow program. Nicholas is a veteran. He's just moved back into the area with heavy equipment experience. I'm just trying to work together with Massachusetts, Massachusetts, and then here in my department, FBI down, a lot of commercial equipment available, a lot of pieces available to get a per diem driver.
All right. Get him before somebody else gets him.
Thank you.
Any comments or from the board? Jim?
Can I make one related comment? I've always been uncomfortable with getting things like the full employment applications in our packet. Anything that goes in our packet and gets discussed.
Public record.
I know that it's probably technically a public record, but there's things in here like his address and phone number are private. Personally, speaking just for myself, I don't feel the need to see this. If I have questions, I know how to get it, but I just want to raise that.
I agree. Steve, since we got you, are you still looking for more snowplow drivers? I saw it on the town sign. Might as well put a plug in if you are.
Trying to pick up a couple more contractors. We do regulations, trying to pick up a few more people to fill in. So, if we have a storm that's long-lasting, we'll have the trucks and the bodies to keep them running 24/7. The bodies will run out before the trucks do.
Always good to be prepared.
All right. In that case, I will, in that case, I will.
I move to authorize the Town Administrator to hire Nicholas Whalen as a per diem tree grounds worker and plow driver for the Town of Stowe Highway Department.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. And then you have one other hire you would like to do also, Steve, a temporary administrative assistant, Susan Ostrander.
That's correct. Susan already works for the town. She's already a great asset in the department she's working for. This is a temporary for allowing the department the time with Denise to work through our needs, and we felt that the temporary was the best thing to do to get us up to speed, help us, and then figure out what's the best for the department and the town moving forward.
Any questions, comments?
Susan's fantastic. She works for the planning department. I think she's fantastic, so that's.
Also, her great place.
Yeah. She works with planning, she's helping concom, she's helping hotel, so she is a great asset.
Pretty soon, she'll be working 40 hours doing something.
This will actually put her at the full-time equivalent.
All right. In that case, I will take, I will entertain a motion.
I move to authorize the Town Administrator to hire Susan Ostrander as temporary part-time administrative assistant for the Town of Stowe Highway Department.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. And the next item that we had on the agenda was register our voters, and we're not quite ready for that, so we're, we will move on. So, actually, Steve's up one more time to give us a quick update on the Lower Village project.
As of October 30, the drainage system is installed and complete. We're finishing up today. The crews worked on re-establishing the power to the Holiday Tree and where the flagpole will be relocated to. The only thing that Jesse and I will have outstanding, and then after the snowstorm on the 30th, would be in the spring to loam and seed and rake it out. We felt that after getting the snow on the 30th, that growing season is now officially over for grass, so to put the loam down, seed it, and try to get it established for winter probably wouldn't happen, which means we'd re-have to do everything we just did again in the spring. So, we made the decision just to hold that one piece off, and we're estimating that's going to be about $20,000 of materials to take care of that. And the project will be off the books for the Highway Department to conclude.
I'm happy to be done with that, as will the planning board. And of course, Lily, did you know that you were going to get a week or so of great weather, where the grass probably would have sprouted great and would have been six inches high by now?
We're trying to hold advantage with fixing broken catch bases and paving over the last couple of days that have been worn. That's important before winter hits.
Yep. Comments, questions from the board? Jim?
I just want to say, Steve, thank you for fitting that in. I'm sure it was a challenge to fit that into your work plan, but that was the best solution for the town and really appreciate you getting that done.
It worked out great. We got it done, so everybody can move forward. Hopefully, put it behind us.
On to new projects. Yes. Well, thank you, Steve. And fine job. Well, not doing too bad. 7:15, we have a tax classification hearing with the assessors. I have my cheat sheet here to tell me what I'm supposed to do.
Can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Yes. Hello, Kristin.
Okay. All right. So, this is definitely, this is definitely new to do this from home. I'll say that.
Yeah. Hold on one second, Kristin. I actually have to open the hearing and.
Oh, okay.
A few other little administrative things along those lines. The Stowe Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, November 10, 2020, 7:15 p.m. in the town building, 380 Great Road, Stowe, on the issue of tax classification. The purpose of the hearing is to allow taxpayers the opportunity to present their views on whether or not residential, commercial, industrial, and open space and personal property should be taxed with one rate for all property classes or to use different tax rates for different property classes. The hearing will include a presentation by the Board of Assessors outlining the options available under Chapter 40, Section 56 of the Mass General Laws. At the conclusion of the public hearing, the Board of Selectmen shall determine whether or not the tax classification shall be applied for the fiscal year 2021 rate. Currently, the town taxes at a single tax rate for all property classes. All concerned taxpayers are encouraged to attend via Zoom to present their views orally or submit in writing to the office. This was posted in the Stowe Independent one time on 10/21/20. Now, now, we have the, our principal assessor, Kristin Fox, who will provide a presentation, and then I will accept the public comment as well as comment from the board. Take it away, Kristin.
Okay. So, everyone can hear me good?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And I'm at home, so hopefully, let's keep our fingers crossed that my internet doesn't glitch and I get moved out of the meeting. But if we do, Bruce, our chair, is here, so hopefully, he's probably hoping that doesn't happen. We'll keep our fingers crossed. Okay. So, I guess Denise, if you could yep things.
Yep.
So, obviously, we're here to choose the minimum residential factor, which will decide whether or not we maintain a single tax rate or adopt a split tax rate. The Selectmen also have the option to grant a residential exemption, small commercial exemption, and an open space discount, but as in previous years, none of those three things really pertain to Stowe. The LA 5 also will be signed tonight. That actually informs the Selectmen of the excess levy capacity as well. The excess levy capacity for fiscal '21 is $2,419,544.68. I'd also like to point out, too, that any and all tax rates that we discuss here tonight are projected tax rates, and they can change during the department revenue approval process, so everyone just keep that in mind. All right. So, four classes of property. So, every year, annually, the assessors classify all property into four classes, the residential open space and the commercial, industrial, and personal property classes. Did you hear me refer to the CIP class? That refers to the commercial, industrial, and personal property classes. That's already been done, and all values have been approved by the property management division of both Stowe. All right. So, minimum residential factor, using the standard formula with this year's numbers, the projected tax rate is $19.98,000. Stowe can also maintain, you can choose a residential factor less than one, which will shift some of the tax burden to the CIP classes or properties. Historically, Stowe has always chosen a minimum residential factor of one. I would like to point out, too, that this tax rate is the lowest we've seen since fiscal '15 and '16. The tax rate was actually $19.98 in fiscal '15 and in fiscal '16. So, we'll be going back to that rate. All right. So, minimum residential factor options. So, as you can see, minimum residential factor of one has a tax rate of $19.98 for all classes. And as the minimum residential factor drops, it's below one, and it shifted in 10% increments up to 150%. You can see that the residential tax rate drops 15 cents with each incremental shift, and the commercial, industrial, personal property tax rate increases like $2, basically, per shift. Okay. So, for fiscal '21, the average single-family assessment is $531,500, and the average tax bill for residential property with the single tax rate would be $10,619. And then, as you can see, with each incremental shift, the average tax bill drops like $80, basically, with each 10% incremental shift. So, it's not a huge savings, basically. The average commercial value for fiscal '21 is $871,000. I'd like to point out that that has gone down. It's usually a little over a million. Pandemic has hit commercial properties a lot harder than residential properties. I actually haven't seen the pandemic have any effect on the residential properties, but the commercial properties, vacancies are up and incomes down. So, shifting the tax rate, as you can see, with each incremental shift, the CIP tax rate increases $2 with each shift increase, and the average tax bill for the commercial properties increases about $1,700. So, you know, savings of $80 per shift for the residential and an increase of $1,700 per shift for the commercial is somewhat burdensome, I think, to the commercial properties. Again, fiscal '21 projected tax rate with a minimum residential factor of one, tax rate will be $19.98 for all properties, again, projected tax rate. All right. Average tax bill. So, in fiscal '20, the average assessed value was $4,95,800. That has increased about $35,700 or 7%. That increase is due to the fact that fiscal '21 is a revaluation year, so we had to, you know, reevaluate the entire town, looking at market trends. Also, we have the new camera system in place, and as I promised you that we would, you know, get better values using a more updated and modern camera system, and we're definitely seeing that in our office, so I'm pretty happy with that average single-family value. The tax rate will decrease about 63 cents from 2061 to. The tax rate will decrease about 63 cents from 2061 to 1998, but the average tax bill will increase about almost 4%, $401 a year for the average taxpayer, mostly based on, obviously, the new values and spending at town meeting. So this is the single-family value distribution. Stowe has 3,033 commercials, of them, 2106 are single-family homes. And this sheet just kind of shows you where each of those fall in the range of value. New growth. So fiscal '21 is a revaluation year. And as you can see on the screen, that renewals used to be every three years. They are now perennial, every five years. So our last rebalance was fiscal '16, so it's been five years. And as you can see, the growth has dramatically dropped since fiscal '20. And like I've said in previous years, the significant growth we've had in fiscal '18, '19, and '20 was largely in part due to the new regency development over on Box Road. So that being said, that development is now complete. Fiscal '21 was the last year that we will get any growth out of that development. So with the lack of any big construction projects, you know, growth is going to go back down to more like fiscal '16 and '17, which is average growth for Stowe. So this year's growth of 339 is pretty good. I mean, I was happy with it. So hopefully, we'll get some new developments. All right, 2018 and '19, single-family sales activities. So fiscal '21 values are derived from calendar year sales from 2019. So this is a comparison between 2018 and '19 or fiscal '20 and '21, basically. As you can see, the sales activity increased from 68 sales to 80, and days on the market increased as well, which is just the law of supply and demand. When there is more inventory on the market, people tend to shop around a little more, whereas when there's less inventory, that's when you see houses get snapped up and maybe a day or two on the market, and then they're gone. So, and then the average sale price kind of remained virtually flat. There's, there was a slight decrease, not even 1%. And again, this just shows you that our average assessed value was much more in line with the market as it should be. And then the last slide, which is usually everybody's favorite slide, is the surrounding municipality picture. How do we compare to other towns around us? And I think Stowe is in pretty good shape. I mean, our average tax bill for fiscal '20 was a little over $10,000 compared to some of our surrounding neighbors. We're still lower, so I think we were still in good place. And the top part of the slide shows communities with a single tax rate. And that line in the middle in Hudson Harbor, while remaining, is our very, our communities with split tax rates. And that concludes everything that I have to say, unless Bruce would like to add anything.
Peter, I, I do not have anything to add except one important point is that Kristin mentioned going through a conversion of the software as well as a certification with the Department of Revenue. Neither one of those are any small things. And I think she and her staff deserve a great amount of credit for not only getting through them in one piece, but being early in terms of a lot of communities with the process. So, great job. That's all I have to say.
Do I have any comments or questions from the board?
I just want to say, that was a great presentation. It was really clear. It's the first time I feel like I really, I get how it all fits together. So thank you, Kristin. That's, that was impressive.
You're quite welcome. You're quite welcome. I'd also like to point out that this is definitely a team effort. When I put these numbers together, and we have a website that all assessors use and municipalities use called Gateway, I could not do it without the town accountant, the town clerk, and the treasurer-collector. All of them play a crucial role in putting numbers together. And basically, you know, we all have to do our part in order to get to this point tonight. So who knows to know?
Thank you. Jim?
If I could just ask two questions?
Sure.
Kristin, I'm like capital planning, too, so I remember hearing a tale of woe about the antiquated software. So the conversion is all done?
Yes, yes, we are completely done. The Department of Revenue signed up on the conversion back in the summer, and we are, we're complete. We are up and running.
That's amazing, because the fiscal year is still fairly young. So congratulations on that. One question that I, I think I remember coming up in previous years. Isn't there a statutory, and this could be for Denise, too. Isn't there a statutory maximum for a tax rate? And if yes, how close are we? And what happens if you go above it?
Yeah, the, the maximum tax rate, I believe, is $25 per thousand for a single rate. So we're, we're pretty far away from that. I think we're going in the right direction. There were some, some years, I think, you know, was it $29.8? I think it was the highest we've gotten. But like we said before in past years, I mean, if we, if we started to climb up towards that, I mean, then obviously we have no choice but to split the rate, so.
Okay, thank you.
And I agree, great presentation as usual.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
This looks great. You're back to life.
Thank you, Kristin. Do we have any, as this is a public hearing, do we have any comments or questions from other attendees? If you do have questions, please raise your virtual hand or try to wave at me. You know, see if I can find you. I am seeing none. In that case, I suppose I will close this public hearing. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Yes, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. The next order of business with this is to discuss whether we want to keep a single tax rate or do a split tax rate. Do we have any discussion on that?
Seems pretty good. I'm fine.
I'm, I'm in favor of maintaining the status quo.
Yeah.
It's, you know, if we want to drive business out of town, we go to a different tax rate.
And this year is particularly not a good year.
Not a good year to do that.
You know, where we've been, you know, last, last week, we, you figure we gave people a break on, you know, the restaurants, a break on their rates, so.
Yeah, that's true.
In that case, I will accept, or I will entertain a motion to maintain a single tax rate.
Based on information from the Board of Assessors, I move that the town of Stowe adopt a minimum residential factor of one to keep a single tax rate for the fiscal year 2021, taking, taxing all property classes at one rate.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. And Maureen, do I, just I sign this, or does everybody sign this?
If everyone could sign, that would be great.
Will the, is, Kristin, are you still there? Will this be up on the website?
The LA5, you mean?
The presentation, just, I think.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I could put it on my website. That's, you know, it's a published paper if anyone's interested.
Maybe not everybody, but, you know, it was so well laid out that even if you haven't heard it, I think it makes sense, so it's worth it.
Sure. I can, I can absolutely do that.
Thank you, Kristin. Fine job as usual, and.
All right, have a good night, everybody.
All right.
Thanks again, Kristin.
Linda reports we should try to be a little more clear talking through masks.
You're done signing? Just put that, put it in place?
Yep.
And we shall move on. The next item on the agenda is we have a public hearing for NANS Market for liquor license applications. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138, the general laws, that 29 Culinary LLC DBA, NANS Market, Jordan C. Mackey, manager, owner, with a premises located at 271 Great Road in Stowe, has applied for a Section 12 license to sell all alcohols as a restaurant and for a Section 15 license to sell wine and malts for on, off-premises consumption. A public hearing will be held on the license application on Tuesday, November 10th, 2020, at 7:30 PM in the Stowe Town Building, 380 Great Road, with attendance via Zoom suggested. This was posted in the Stowe Independent on 10/28/20. All right. Next.
I'm going to read the.
If you could, yes, please, Ellen. If you could read the list of abutters and request that those in attendance indicate by saying present. So as Ellen reads through these, if you are present, if you could please so indicate.
We have a bunch for the town of Stowe. I guess.
Presence.
Plantation Apartments, Two. Mauricio. Hamilton. Mahon. Lemoine. Hanatio. McDonald. Anderson. Halleck. Phillips Heritage LLC. Estebrook. Whoop, excuse me? Was that?
Present.
That was for Phillips Heritage?
Yes, that's Wes Schubert.
Great, thank you. Estebrook. De Velis. Cleary.
Present.
Cleary is present?
Yes.
Yes.
McCarthy. John's Irrevocable Trust. Young. Major. Korn. Drought. Hopkins. Warner LaFleur. Grizzard. Reynolds. Kudaraskas. Farrell. Anding. And Plantation Apartments again, but, all right, good.
Okay. Do we have Jordan Mackey on here? Yes, I see.
We do.
Hello, Jordan. If you could explain to us what you're trying to do and why you would like the liquor licenses?
Sure. The Section 15 is so we can utilize the interior space for creative retail. Our intention is to do an organic and biodynamic wine program and craft beer program, including a build-your-own-four-pack, a relatively small, intelligently curated selection. The Section 12 license is only for use outside between the months of, let's say, late April and November, to utilize for a cocktail hour and to provide us a safe gathering space in the outdoors with some picnic tables spread around the property to allow us to serve and offer a picnic-type of environment where people can purchase and consume, you know, beer, wine, and spirits and enjoy them in the grass.
All right. Do I have any comments or questions from the board at this point?
Well, I, I guess I have a question. So you haven't opened yet, is that right?
That is correct.
So I'm, I guess I'm wondering about the, and I have to keep getting them right, the Section 12 seems premature, given that you haven't opened yet and we won't, we're really not allowing much for outdoor activities, and it wouldn't be until the spring. So I'm, I'm still a little unclear on the two different licenses. But I guess that was my first question. It seemed like the space isn't set up for indoor restaurants at this point.
No, we, we have no intentions of congregation indoors. It's going to be counter-service, takeout, and retail. The interior of the space doesn't lend itself well size-wise or currently safety-wise to provide the amount of space and/or volume to make a Section 12 license indoors economically feasible. On the comment of it being premature, we wanted our licenses to be on the same schedule, even though we do not intend to enact our use of the Section 12 license until the weather breaks in the springtime. We thought it would make sense to get the application together, submit them together, especially with our intention of holding two licenses that we would want to present it as one package to illustrate our full intent.
Hi, I'm Megan. I had a quick question. I was looking over the, the initial, or the special permit and site plan approval that was given by the planning board. And the, on 7.9, they had agreed for 14 outdoor seats. And so are you planning on keeping to the 14 outdoor seats? Or are you planning on going back to the planning board and asking for an amendment?
We, we will be planning on asking for an amendment on that, but considering that we don't need it until the springtime, we're really kind of combing through that special use as our understanding of it is at this point. That is the only change, is that we're relocating the indoor seats that were originally permitted outdoors in addition to the 14. One of the issues with the reduction to 14 was the line of sight to the abutter. And since then, I do believe that the privacy fence was erected, and where we plan on adding outdoor seating will be completely obscured by the privacy fence. So we will be going through this and, and giving a full overview of our plans for the outdoor space to the planning board and seeking approval prior to the warm weather breaking so that we can be sure that we have everyone's unanimous support with what we plan to do with this place.
Gotcha. So my, on that, my only concern with us approving that particular license right now is that the way that the decision was written is that it bumps to the Board of Selectmen to deal with the liquor licenses once, like as, as this is written. And so if there's a change to it, I don't, my question is whether or not we then, like if we can authorize a liquor license based on this special permit in front of us, which is what we're being asked to do, but if there's going to be a modification to it, would they then have to come back and request that again?
Yes.
So I'm just asking that as a thing. And then with it being slightly premature, would it make sense for us to not approve that particular license, fully understanding that you want them on the same schedule and fully understanding that we want to support this business? But my only concern is that if we approve the liquor license tonight on that, then we would have to just go back to the drawing board once it goes through planning board again. And if it just makes more sense for us to deal with that particular license once the modification has been made? Am I making sense, Denise?
So I would recommend that, Megan. So yes, in order to file the license with the AVCC, we have to specify the exact premises. According to the special permit, it's 14 outdoor seats. I would recommend you do not take action on the. I would recommend you do not take action on the seasonal license. Having them on the same schedule, it's by nature anyways, because licenses are annual, they are going to come up for renewal every year at the same time. I would recommend you hold off on the seasonal until Jordan speaks with the planning board about amending that outdoor seating. When and if they do that, then he could come back before this board and actually get the board to approve what we're, where he's able to serve, because that's what the license will identify.
When you say seasonal, you mean the Section 12 restaurant license?
Yes, correct.
Okay. I agree. I have one question for Jordan. I think the most we could do tonight, and I think Denise kind of said this, is if we were to allow it, it would be limited to 14, which is clearly what you're not looking for. But, Jordan, I am curious, ultimately, when you go to the planning board, how many outdoor seats do you intend to ask for?
We intend to match what was initially permitted for the inside, which I believe was 41 plus the addition of 14 outside. So, it would be probably less than that. It depends on how we're able to size it up with the picnic tables, but some, somewhere around 40 to 45, so 10 picnic tables.
Okay. So, that's a substantial difference from the special permit. I wouldn't be comfortable really approving, before hearing public comment, but I thought right now that I'm not comfortable approving anything before it goes back to the planning board, at least not on the Section 12.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with you, Jim. I do think we just need to see, because the planning board has specific conditions that they put, and findings that they put in their special permit, because they're thinking very holistically about it all, and so I want to just make sure that they've sort of gone back to that part of it and have given their blessing before we would, or before I would feel comfortable with that one. But certainly with the indoor retail component of it, I think, is a different beast.
Well, one of the things I'm looking at, too, is that we're having a public hearing based on the existing conditions, as you said.
Right.
The public may have different viewpoint if it is raised to 40 or 45.
Right.
And then we may be having a different discussion.
Right.
So, I fully support that stuff. One of the other things I noticed is that the planning board decision said that they could be, that 9:00 PM was closing time. And is it your intent to maintain that, or would you be asking for modifications to that also?
No, our proposed closing time is actually 8:00 PM. The only exceptions to that would be for like a private event or a small wedding where we would go to 9:00. So, the 9:00 isn't an issue, we would be wrapping it up. Our intention for the outside license is very, very short window that would span probably 3:00 PM to 6:30 or 7:00 PM, and then we'd be wrapping up. It's definitely no nightlife, no bar activity. It's a very, very different vibe that we're looking to create, and it's more of an afternoon picnic vibe, not a late-night rowdy vibe.
So, no dancing on the picnic table?
We won't encourage it.
Well, the thing is, if Wes and Shirley go up there, they might.
We won't discourage it either.
So, I'd just like to comment, I agree with my fellow board members, but, Jordan, I just want to say that I appreciate that you did bring the two, the application for both licenses to us at once, because it's helpful to me to have all that information about what your intent is and to see the picture, and I'm in favor of it. It sounds like your business will be in addition to our town.
Hey, you know, we're looking to have an outdoor bar with misters in the summer where you can bring your dog, you know, very, very community vibe, definitely something new for new times, that's what we're trying to do.
Cool. That's awesome.
Jim?
Jordan, let's assume for a moment that ultimately you get both licenses. Are you aware of the restrictions on when you have a restaurant and a retail package store, for lack of a better word, buddy each other on the same premises?
Yeah, we are well aware of it. I have a number of friends and colleagues that have similar situations. There needs to be very, very clearly defined demarcations, and there will be no, the transactions are separate, everything is separate. So, yeah, we're very aware of the regulations on how to manage that and effectively keep them as separate entities.
Okay.
And we're even tracking the sales independently as well.
Okay, and at least 50% of the revenue generated from the retail has to be grocery and not liquor, is that what that's, I understand it?
That's, we're counting on that.
Okay, good. All right, thank you, just want to mention that.
All right, so probably, is there any point in continuing, well, should I take a...
I could take comment.
Public comment right now, but on, at least on this license, we're probably not moving any action, and we'll end up having to convene another one.
Well...
Unless we want to...
Can we split them?
I thought possibly we were acting on the Section 15 tonight.
Well...
I don't know what his preference is. Do you?
Yeah, I would be very happy with that. Postponing the Section 12 actually saves me three grand into my opening. I'm not worried about it. But I am very much attached to the Section 15 landing in your office before Christmas season, because I have a couple full-time jobs counting on it, and we definitely want to be able to sell craft beer and wine throughout Christmas season, so I would definitely love in action on the 15 license.
But let's hear what the neighbors have to say.
Yeah, right.
Yep. All right. Do I have any public comment from any of the neighbors or abutters? If you do have comments, please raise your virtual hand or wave at me, and I will try to find you. At this point, I am not seeing any comments or questions. Nothing from any of, we had very few abutters.
Right, just the two.
For any, for any of the abutters that happen to be on, do you have any comments, concerns that you would like us to take into account?
I have no concerns on the current state of it. I'll be interested to see what happens when it moves forward.
All right. We will probably be talking about the retail license in a few minutes, a little bit more, but in that case, I'll move on to the retail license. I kind of, I did have a couple questions on that myself. Does anybody else have any questions? No? You know, one of my questions, I suppose, and concerns is, you may have taken care of some of them by saying you were going to have a very curated selection. So, that means you're not going to be selling Budweiser and competing with the other liquor stores in town, you know?
That is correct.
So, can you give me a little bit more detail on some of that? And if we, if we were to put restrictions on it, so that later, you know, part of it is, we already have three places selling beer and wine in town, and I am a little concerned about, you know, it will essentially be biting into their business. However, if it's strictly craft beer and, you know, curated wines, it's probably a little bit less so.
That is the plan. One of our major concerns going into this, one, because it's not polite to move into a town and sell the same things as your neighbor, right? Another reason is, we also wanted a differentiating factor for our brand and our customers, what sets us apart. And, you know, taking a bit of a natural, a natural foods approach as well as a culinary approach, really was able to set us apart to, one, not be pulling the same brands as colonial spirits or Russell's. We're dealing with different purveyors, and the solely organic and biodynamic, sustainably grown wine program is a unique concept that none of our competitors offer, which will at one point give us an edge and at another point not have us step on their business. It's not our intention to duplicate any of their products. In fact, many of our vendors, we've had meetings with them to ensure that we're not listing any products that our competitors sell. On the craft beer front, it's a little more challenging, because every business that sells craft beer is really focused on the locality. How we plan to package it is a little bit different. As I mentioned, to build your own four-pack, we're also going to organize and merchandise the beers a little bit differently and curate them by style, so it'll be a little easier to shop, so you'll be able to kind of browse based on light beers, Pulshes, you know, as opposed to several, several coolers of different IPAs that many of the craft beer places in the area put forth. We're looking to be unique and different across the board, but with craft beer, it's going to be hard to not have some overlap, because everyone such as us is really focused on keeping the business local and helping your neighbors. So, you know, in my eyes, if somebody's here, you know, buying some vitamins or grabbing lunch or picking up another service that we have that our competitors don't, and they wind up buying a similar four-pack, well, it's just great for that Massachusetts brewery, and we're selling more of their products. I mean, that's really the best way that we could look at it and justify it.
Can I ask you a question? It sounds like there's no issue with your set of theories, is that something we're allowed to consider in a license decision like this?
I would say no.
I mean, that would be my gut, because that's, you can't really consider impact on businesses. We can consider a neighbor that the town is all, you know, things like that, but it sounds like there's no issue anyway, but I'm not so sure that that's something that's proffered in front of us.
Yep. So informed, you know, like, I just worry about the other businesses that are in town, you know?
Well, if I might make a comment on that, I think this is not just a personal belief, that there is some, there has been some evidence that when you have multiple businesses that have similar products or services, that what happens is that the awareness of those products and services is raised.
Yep.
And so, rather than hurting them, it actually helps them, because now a customer may say, oh, yeah, there's at least one place in Stowe I can get my favorite craft beer. And so, they might shop any of the stores to compare what they carry, or to see, oh, they're out of it over here, maybe I can get it over here. Well, now that I'm here, they don't have it either, but I'll buy this. So, I think it, it wouldn't necessarily hurt them.
Yeah, and I do think, I mean, speaking as someone who manages a small business, I think that small businesses tend to help each other. You know, if it was a chain, it would be something totally different, but I think that having multiple small businesses in town can only help us. And I'm excited, thank you, Jordan. This was, I mean, every question we had, I feel like it was very well thought through, and I don't know, I'm excited. Any new business in town, I'm excited about.
Well, I'm anxious, I'm happy to see something going in at this spot. I've been anticipating something there for quite a while, and glad to see you getting off the ground with it. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And I'm all in favor of new businesses, too. And old businesses. So...
So, how do we handle the hearings? How do we handle the two, I mean, basically the split hearing? Are we, because the draft motions were to continue it, but we don't.
Can we close this hearing, and then they're going to have to open a whole separate one for the second license? Like, yes. That, I think, is the best way to do it, right?
As opposed to...
If you close the whole thing, then we vote, because we're going to have to advertise it, it's going to have to be a whole thing, because it's going to have to get advertised based on after the planning board takes action on it, so...
So, but this is, is this inseparable tonight? So, is there any way to make, to approve the Section 15?
Well...
Yeah, but it's two steps. We close the hearing, and then we just move on to 15.
We can move no action, right? We can move no action on the 12 and...
I would think that's...
Yeah, I just wasn't clear. It started to me like you were saying, we're going to close the hearing and make them start over.
Oh, no, 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 no. You have to close the hearing and then take a vote.
I think we, I think we could table the hearings, the hearing and the application on the Section 12, and close the hearing on the Section 15, and then vote on the Section 15 application.
I just, is it because it's one hearing together? That's my concern.
I think we can probably close the hearing, act on the single license, and then move on. I think that's what you're saying.
But I think we're going to have to open another hearing up, because there's going to have, they're going to have to notify the abutters, it's going to have to, it's going to have to be its own beast, and maybe we talked about waiving a few, but like...
I would say you don't need to really table anything. You would close the public hearing and then just make a motion on the Section 15.
Right.
And then when he's ready with the planning board to go back for the Section 12, it would have to be re-notified of the abutters, because there will be different conditions in the license.
Yep.
So, motion to close the public hearing.
Let me just make sure that there's no other comments.
Absolutely.
Do we have any other comments from, comments or questions from the public? Going once, going twice? I will...
There you go.
These are the two people that are going to dance on the picnic tables.
Hi, Wes, how are you?
I guess, just for clarification, yeah, just for clarification, this Wes Fisher and Shirley Burke, still. Jordan's, you will be making a decision on Jordan's need for, he has these employees that he's got in the wings. Just want to make sure, you're going to act on that this evening?
Yes.
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 Just the, just the retail license?
Fine, that's, that was my only concern.
All right. Going, going?
This is David Sowerski.
Hello, David.
Hi. I'm speaking on behalf, as a resident of Lake Boone, in this area of Stowe, it's kind of away from Uptown, and so we have two options in this area. We usually go to Hudson Center versus Stowe Center because of the options that are over there, so having this come into town gives us a great reason to shop in our own town, which we would definitely make that choice over going to Hudson, so definitely in favor for this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Someone commented on the chat that they seconded that comment.
Okay. In that case, I will take a motion to close the public hearing.
So, move.
Jim?
I move a public hearing for the liquor license applications for Nance Market. Oh, I'm sorry.
Just a second.
Second. Hearing problem.
All in favor of closing the public hearing? All right.
Okay, would you like a motion on the Section 15 license?
I'll take a motion, then we can have any discussion we need to have on it, and we can move on.
Great. I move to approve the Section 15 off-premises wine and malt beverages liquor license application for Nance Market at 271 Great Road in Stowe, as described in the application received October 14, 2020, and subject to final approval by the Massachusetts Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission.
Second. Do we have any other discussion or comments?
And just, I just want to make sure, given the discussion around planning board, there is nothing on this piece that needs to be changed, right, in terms of what the planning board had approved already?
As long as the hours stay between 7:00 to 9:00, the outdoor parking is at 24 spaces, I think those were the two major items.
And the lighting is a separate thing?
Yeah, so those were the two major items that would impact, the rest of the permit would already cover a indoor retail component.
Okay, thank you.
Courtney, Jim, nothing?
No.
Right? In that case, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Jordan, I'll be by to see what kind of beer you have.
I'll look, I'll look forward to it, and we'll be drafting our amendment to the special use, and we really want to make sure that all the things we want to do are encompassed, and I think that everyone will be very excited about that as well. We're very conscious and sensitive to what's going to be disruptive, and our goal is to enhance the... enhance the community and provide wonderful things to do and to enjoy this incredible space that Wes and Shirley renovated. And I see no challenges there, but we definitely want to make sure that all our teeth are crossed and our eyes are dotted. So we will, we will reconvene and resubmit paperwork, no big deal. And we'll hopefully be pouring some cocktails in the garden in the spring for everybody.
Type 15. All right. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To sign new license and this is type 15 off-premises.
So does everybody know off the top of their head how many section 15s we have left?
Well, Yellen does.
Hang on a second.
Because I took a picture from Maureen last time, so I was just looking at it. Um, well, okay, you'd want to do that, do you? Let's see. The section 15 is the retail, right? Wine and, uh, we have three left now.
We'll go this way this time.
Wine, because that's just wine and malt, yeah.
Just that first.
Five altogether. Only one had been taken, which I think is Russell's.
Okay.
Because they don't, they all.
Oh, yeah, three section 12. So there's only a section 12.
So all alcohol, there's nine allowed, five taken, four is available.
Okay.
And if they were to only do wine and malt, four are allowed, only one is taken.
All right. Well, we're signing that and it's just the first one, Jim. Just the first one.
Go ahead. Sign your thing, yes.
Yeah. Well, there's two of them in there. The other one is the.
Is the 12.
The 12.
Oh.
So don't sign them.
So that's why, that's why I would, I have to look after you, trust me. Next up, we have a presentation by the Minuteman High School Superintendent Ed Boquillen about a, the high school athletic field project. Superintendent Boquillen, how are you, sir?
I'm well. How are you all doing? Good to sort of see you.
Just, just sort of, huh?
You don't have to have a mask on. It's harder to see us.
No, I'm home. I love the Zoom stuff. I actually, we were at four different meetings last night and it all from my office, so.
All at the same time?
Thanks for the time. I have with me Alice DeLuca, your representative of Stowe, and I have Gerardy, our director of finance. I have a little presentation. Denise, can I share it or do you have to do it?
You could certainly share it if you'd like.
Okay. Can you see that?
Yes, you can.
Okay, cool. So we just, we're coming to the end of our project. Just to give you an overview, I know there's some new folks that may not know much about Minuteman, may know a lot about Minuteman, but I can't assume everyone knows everything. So the MSBA project, we are still a year early and we're on budget. Although we only spent a few months in the new building, we were asked to leave in March. We've been in a hybrid model since middle of September. We've had no cases of COVID at all at school, but our hybrid model is we have one grade in the school full-time in person for the whole week in their CTE, their career and technical education shop area, and the other three grades are remote. And although that's not what we desire, it's what we're doing right now and it seems to be working real well. In our original budget, we included fields in our original budget, but it was less than a billion dollars in the MSBA. It was just a basic, simple field. Can you all hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
So where we're at at the end of the project, where we're at the beginning of the closeout stage with MSBA and our construction management firm, which is M Hill Bay, through exemplary project management, Alice is also on the school building committee as well as the school committee, we've got about $4 million available to put towards the fields. We put out some bidding, we had a very competitive process for the athletic fields, we had eight bidders and we've got some great pricing. Also, because of the economic and COVID situation, the interest rates are very low and for a small incremental investment, we have a greater opportunity to generate revenue off these three fields. I wish we had had more time, but sort of things came together in a way that I think it's important we try to take advantage of the situation that we can, that we find ourselves in. And I want, I appreciate the time to talk to you about that. So just to give you, minimize this right for you. So this is, as I said before, in our original MSBA budget, where we had assumed we'd have less than a billion dollars for athletic fields, we have more. So we worked with our, our architects and our owner's project manager and came up with a three synthetic field, athletic field, which has an ASP in the base bid. This is the base scope. There's a walking track around the football field. There's dugouts and batting cages and bullpens for the softball multipurpose field, for the baseball field. We had to maintain emergency access and drop-off. And this base bid includes maintenance equipment and scoreboards and utilities for each of the fields. And with our, in our initial estimates, we estimated that this would be less than about 5.9 million. We, at the same time, understanding that the bidding, we were anticipating a competitive bid process, we decided, well, let's put in our request for bids, some alternates. And basically the alternates were to put lighting on all the three fields, add a real, you know, high school competitive track and field, track around the multipurpose stadium football field, and then some fencing and other equipment. And I can tell you that, you know, we're, part of these fields are in Lincoln, part of them are in Lexington, and we went through the full permitting process with the planning boards in each town and with the conservation commission in each town. And this has all been approved, although this is a scaled-down version of what we asked them for. So the school committee, looking at what we had pending from the MSBA project, it's about 4.1 million. There's a couple of hundred thousand dollars pending, being verified during this closeout process. And then in our facilities rental revolving account, we're putting in 615,000. Out of our stabilization account, 1.2 million. So these are all district funds that already exist and had to be shown to be available in order to even bid the project. So this is a, I don't know if you can see this, there's a lot of stuff on here, but these are the, the eight bids that we received. And you can see in this first column here, this is the base bid price. What is the price for the three synthetic fields? And it ranged from 4.4 million all the way up to 6.4 million. And then the costs of the added alternates were done by, were also included in this chart. So we were pretty happy with, with the bid that we got. And Heimlich Construction, they've recently done some work in Lexington. They also did all the fields at Shawshin Technical High School in Billerica. And so this is just a picture of the alternates and the costs associated with each of those alternates. So the school building committee and the school committee started to discuss, well, what would it take to really finish these fields? Put lighting on, which as you know, adds more hours and can generate more revenue for the, for the district to offset the costs of additional borrowing or offset the costs of maintenance and capital replacement. So when you add it all up, what's the difference? There's about 1.9 million dollars difference from what we have and what we would need, including soft costs and contingency costs. And the, I've had a couple of meetings with the town managers over the last few, over the last month, and they were reporting rates of borrowing at like point seven, although we were using 1.7% interest as a, as a marker. So, and just, we had a, we did a detailed analysis a few years ago when we were, at the time, you may recall, we were looking at partnering with the town of Lexington at a much larger facility and that they would kick in a bunch of money. Well, that didn't really work out. It was, it just wasn't a compatible partnership. But during that time, we met with a lot of groups that were interested in, in renting fields, private groups, public groups, nonprofit, for-profit groups. And that ended up, we did a detailed analysis of what sort of revenue could be generated. And we sent this, our estimates, to a company called Ballard and King, and that report's available if anyone wants to, wants a copy of it, to review our estimates and projections. And they came back with a much more conservative estimates of what we could generate in those three fields with lights. And so we're using their more conservative revenue projections. Also, you know, for the last three years, Minuteman athletes have not had a home field, so we've been spending money renting other fields and transporting our student athletes to away games. We haven't had a home game in three years. As you know, this is going on the site where the other building was, which is now gone and had been fully remediated. And then folks may not know, but in the new facility, in the new building, we have a lot of other potential assets that folks have expressed an interest in renting. The theater, the gymnasium, we have corporate meeting rooms, which are serviced by our hospitality and culinary arts programs. We have a large courtyard, student union, restaurant, training areas and common spaces. So having lighted athletic fields really adds a robust, I think, and, you know, potentially valued resource for the district. So if we did borrow, if the school committee did borrow, vote to borrow, and then it has to go through a process, which I'll mention, you know, what would it cost each town? And this is a listing of by fiscal year, and this is, I've got to say again, using 1.7%, so it'd be a little less. Across the top row is the percentage that each town of the nine-member towns would be paying towards the borrowing of 1.9 million. And Stowe is currently around 8% of the district. And so the annual additional cost, which would be embedded within the assessment to the town, would be $18,000 in FY '22 and going down to 15,000 over 10 years. The anticipated construction schedule, we awarded the base bid. We haven't awarded any alternates yet, obviously, but we had our first construction meeting today with Heimlich Construction around their process and we're anticipating a three-month shutdown, but if December is anything like November, we probably won't shut down. But he's also, I got to mention, is holding his pricing until the middle of January. So if we do want to exercise the alternates, that same pricing is going to hold through for the next couple of months, which is an important, another important factor to try and get folks feedback on whether or not we should move forward with this. But a year from now, we have substantial completion and hopefully have fall sports on our own fields again for the first time in, in four years. So that's a brief overview. Be happy to take any questions or comments, or if there are any slides that you want me to review.
Megan.
Hi. I have a question. How much do you anticipate maintenance in three turf fields?
We have another spreadsheet on that. Our architects helped us figure that out. The, the maintenance costs are less than natural turf fields. And I'm thinking it was around 175 to 200,000 a year. And then we're also budgeting, putting aside, I think it is 168,000 a year, so that in 10 to 12 years, when those fields need to be replaced, we have the money set aside in our capital stabilization fund, so we're not having to come back to the towns for that expenditure.
Ellen?
And I, I don't know if we need to go back to the slide, but in terms of the financing, is there a concern about how much you're taking out of your own stabilization funds for this? And, and sort of, and I, this is sort of a question for you and for Denise around, this doesn't require a town meeting vote. Is that right?
Well, under chapter 7116D, a regional school committee can vote to authorize borrowing, but that borrowing cannot occur for 60 days. And within those 60 days, if a town wanted to call a town meeting and vote no on that authorization, then the authorization to borrow would be ended and there would be no borrowing. However, if the town is in agreement with it and they don't want to go through the process of holding a town meeting to say yes, they do not have to hold a town meeting, by no action, it becomes approved by virtue of disapproval. Oh, I'm sorry, by virtue of non-disapproval.
No action.
Sorry. Yeah, so pretty interesting. Those of you who remember the process Minuteman went through to get the building approved, two years in a row, we went through the whole town meeting process, had 15 yeses, and then the town of Belmont voted no two years in a row. So we ended up going in the third year to a district-wide ballot where 70% of the citizens voted to move forward with the building project.
So the other part of that was around, this slide around your stabilization fund. Just, I mean, because for me, from my basic understanding of town finance, if you take it out of your stabilization now, we might end up having to pay more in, in the next operating year.
Well, what we've done for the last few years in, in the stabilization account, which has been in our budget, we started the stabilization account about six years ago, I believe now, for the express purpose of buying new equipment for the new school because the MSBA formula for FF and E, furnitures, fixtures and equipment, is woefully inadequate when it comes to equipping a career and technical high school. As a matter of fact, the, the formula is the same for a middle school or an elementary school or a high school and a vocational school. So we set that up and started contributing, I think for the first few years, 300,000 dollars a year. And that was in the Minuteman District budget and that was in the assessment in the member towns. But over the last four years, we've been very successful in getting grants, over 1.4, I think 1, counting the one we just got, close to 1.3 million dollars in capital skills grants, where we've been able to purchase new equipment. So we really haven't had to go into our stabilization account for that equipment. And fortunately, it's available now. But the stabilization contribution for the last couple of years has been lowered to about 100,000 dollars a year. And in FY '22, we're slating it at around 85,000. So there's no, I'm not sure what your intent is, but there's no intention on our part to try to refill the stabilization account. We have really no need to.
That was really helpful. Thank you, Ed.
Jim?
Dr. Quillen, thank you for the presentation. I think I've got just a few questions, because I think I get it. You, you mentioned that you have all the permits. Did you mean by that, you also have all the permits for the air alternates? I would think that the lights alone might require some permitting.
We have all the permits. I can actually show you the last slide, which is an extra slide in case this question came up.
Glad to help you out.
Yep. Right onto you. Thanks. So this was something we called the full build. And when we were discussing with potential partners, and I should back up a little bit, we actually had special legislation passed for us and signed by the governor, I think it was in July of 17 or 18, that allowed Minuteman School District to enter into long-term ground leases up to 50 years and with partners who are mission-compatible and campus-centric. In other words, there were some private. In other words, there were some private developers that were interested in building a facility like you're seeing right now, which had everything we're looking at now with the addition of tennis courts, which we're not building, with the addition of stadia to hold 1,200 folks, and with the addition of a pretty nifty, I call it just a athletic building, which had a kitchen and a caf, not a cafeteria, but a kitchen, had locker rooms, restrooms, places for food trucks to hook up, so that events, larger athletic meets or athletic competitions could be held there. Well, that never really panned out, but we ended up getting all of it permitted, including all the lights, including the buildings. And as we tore down the existing building, we remedied it, we did find some soil that needed to be remediated that we didn't plan on. But we also put in some infrastructure so that at a later time, some other school committee could finish this if they wanted to, because the infrastructure's going to be there.
Okay. Thank you. Just a couple of quick follow-ups, if I may. On this slide about our percentage, Stowe's 8.1% contribution, I do not remember the district agreement. Does that percentage have the potential to change as our enrollment changes, or if membership in the district changes, or is that fixed?
Absolutely. It'll change a tiny bit every year, because your share is based upon 50% on the four-year rolling average.
Okay.
And then, a common share, I think, of 1%. And then, the other is based upon the formula that the Department of Ed sets about where your minimum local contribution needs to be. So, it could, it could change, yes. But it'll change very slowly.
Okay. It'll change potentially based on both enrollment and membership in the district, if that changes?
Yes.
Okay. Last question. If I understood your memo correctly, the school committee has approved, obviously, the basic athletic field expenditures, but has not yet approved the ad alternates. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I just clarify? I believe you said that your school committee was meeting, is it next week to discuss that, the ad alternates?
The week after, the 17th. Or is that next week?
That's next week.
Yes.
They're all starting to roll together.
Yeah, the 17th, they would consider voting on the authorization, and then the 60-day clock would begin. And I can tell you, Denise, that, as you know, I've met with other town select boards and FinComs. We're continuing to meet with them. We've had a lot of positive encouragement to move forward, because of the low interest rates and because of the, you know, the opportunity to have more hours to, for, available for our member towns and for other potential renters.
And just one more question for clarification. It is a unanimous, has to be a unanimous vote from all nine communities, correct?
From the town meeting, from the town members, yes. From the school committee, it needs to be, Alice, is it seven-eighths or two-thirds of the nine members?
I think it's two-thirds, but I'd have to look it up.
I think you're right, yeah. But in this, in this kind of a vote, every town has an equal weight. For regular votes, the new regional agreement, which was passed in '15 or '16, is a weighted vote based upon your four-year rolling average enrollment. But in this vote, everyone has an equal vote.
Any other comments? Dr. Buquillen, I have a couple of questions. One is going back to, I think, what Ellen was mentioning, was taking money out of the stabilization account, which, as you say, it's district money, but it came from the towns and through assessments. But now, it's being spent on something that we don't really get a say in. To spend, you know, almost $6 million, I'm sorry, what you have already, when, as you said, originally, you budgeted about $1 million for the athletic fields. And I know that some of the fights that we had a few years ago, just for Neshoba Regional High School, to get $1 million between the three towns. So, I'm a little disappointed that this much money's being spent on athletic fields. You know, that's, and if it weren't for, you know, I would probably advocate to take this to town meeting. However, given COVID, I'm not inclined to try to have a town meeting. It's going to cost us $30,000. So, I'm kind of disappointed that this is coming out around now. And then, the only other thing that I was looking at is that you're looking at $340,000 to $400,000 in income a year on the field. Why can't you use those funds instead of asking us, as a district or as a town, to come up with another $18,000 a year, when it looks like your annual payment is about $223,000? So, I know I said an awful lot, but...
No, I understand. Well, the revenue that, the revenue that we generate goes into the revolving fund. And the revolving fund is used to pay for maintenance and operations, and will be used to offset the costs of the borrowing. We don't want to sell it like that, because I know there's been some other projects that have promised some things that haven't been delivered. This is not one of those. The regional agreement is clear about how, and the statutes are clear about how stabilization funds are established, and how they're, how they're filled with money, and how the money goes out. We're trying to be as transparent as possible. And as I said, this is, a lot of things came together pretty quickly because of the really unfortunate circumstances, which have given us some opportunities that we wouldn't have had otherwise. And although we planned for, in our original budget to the MSBA, which was developed almost six years ago now, we wanted to make sure that we had enough money in that budget to build, you know, the best vocational school we could. And it was through our management of the process all along the way that we ended up with more money to put towards the field. That amount of money's our, that 145 billion, in other words, 4 million of that 5.9 is already been, you know, that's like committed to the project. So, we couldn't do anything with that money if we wanted to.
You could give it back to the towns.
I suppose we could, if the school committee voted that.
Yep. And, so, you know, it's, we are, my point is that we already spend an inordinate amount of money with Minuteman. You guys have a great school, a great program. But, you know, now looking at spending over $6 million for athletic fields, I have serious heartburn about it. I don't know if any of my other colleagues do or not. If they don't, I'll probably be quiet and move on. But at least I will have had, I will have said my piece. So, does, nobody else has a problem?
I actually do not have a problem, but I, and I, and the reason is that, you know, when we voted this school, we approved the original project for the new school, however many years ago. And to me, we're getting a six- or $7 million set of athletic fields for $2 million, because they did a really good job of managing that enormous school that had to really, I mean, Minuteman, I can't say enough, my kids didn't even go to Minuteman, and I'm awed by how much gets done out of that school. So, I think it was worth every penny. And if they can make it work and take advantage of the low interest rates now, and getting these bids, I mean, this is a little like when Center School got lucky, because all the architects were dying for work. And so, we got an incredibly good deal, and the best architect, I would say, in the state for a bargain. And it's the same way here, is that I think they're, they're taking smart advantage of where we're at economically and everything else. And it's just, and this is stuff that's going to last a long time. And, you know, it'd be great if they rent out as much as the conservative estimates are. That's terrific, and we won't, we won't have to be paying as much going down the road. But better to be conservative, and it's really not very much money, especially for still right now, for making them a much, I mean, the lights are what make it a rentable thing. If they don't have lights, they can't do, they can't rent out the fields. So, I think it's, you'd be cutting off your nose to spite your face. $18,000 versus a possible upside of $300,000 a year. Why not?
Well, it's $18,000 to us.
$18,000 to us, right. And we're not getting $300,000, but we'll get 8% or whatever, so...
Well, the thing is, we're not going to get anything out of it, actually.
Actually, we have students who go to this school. Do not forget that. That's why we support schools.
So, everybody else feel pretty much the same?
Sorry, do you?
No, go ahead.
Okay. I do not have a problem with this. I do think that the location of Minuteman makes it also very, very desirable for different sports, like, for renting it out. I think that, sorry, what I'm trying to say. Yeah, so I do think that there is a rental potential there, knowing how many recreational sports leagues there are in the area. And I, and I think that, like Ellen was saying, if they're able to take advantage of these low interest rates right now, that it makes sense to build that now. I do, I understand the, we're in a weird time with COVID, right? Like, nobody's getting full use of anything we're putting money into right now. And that's, so I think it makes it hard to sort of see it in the, in the short term. But I do think that if we can take advantage of the low interest rates and invest in it now, then I think that our, I think it's going to turn out for the best in the long run. And yeah, I do think we spent a lot of money on Minuteman. We have a wonderful school at Neshoba, but Minuteman takes a very specific, allows children to have a very specific curriculum that wouldn't necessarily be benefiting at Neshoba. And I think we need to look at those students as well, and not just the students that go to Neshoba, so...
You know, I think just putting it in another vein, right, just from my standpoint, we're talking $18,000 a year. It doesn't seem like that much. But I think we have somewhere around 18 students. So, it's another $1,000 a year per student. When Neshoba comes and says, because we have 300 students there, that they want another 3 million, because they want the same kinds of athletic fields, what are you, what are we going to say then?
Well, I was not here when they built the brand-new athletic fields at the school, whenever. So, I assume that there was some kind of a conversation that happened to that effect then.
Right. And there was, you know, there was a bit of a knock-down drag-out. And, you know, because it was a lot of money. And at the time, for a thousand-student school, and granted, it was a number of years ago, you know, it was about a million, a million and a half that they were asking for. All right? And when you're talking about, you know, all right, it's only another $1,000 a year per student.
No, it's not.
Maybe, maybe I'm wrong.
You have 43, you have 43 students.
We have 43? My, I'm wrong, I'm wrong.
43, yeah.
Well, that's because I think we've doubled it, or more than doubled it. All right? So, it's, I was putting it in a gross number, but it's, you know, $400 to $500 per year, somewhere in that neighborhood, per student. Which is still a lot of money, per student. So, but, Jim?
Did you want to say something?
It's okay, you can go first.
Three quick points. We were talking about the stabilization fund a bit before. I don't have a problem with them using a stabilization fund for capital expenses. If I'm hearing correctly, they don't use it for operating expenses, hopefully.
No, no, we're not allowed to.
Right. But if they're using it for capital expenses, I don't, and I'm glad that they have one. I mean, I think any public entity ought to. Sure, I may not least the call if I were on the school committee to spend my stabilization fund, if it's $2 billion and the school's that big, I may not spend it down as much as they are, but presumably they are refunded. Normally, if we didn't have a pandemic, I would be in favor of having a special town meeting, especially if we could think of some other reason to have one, and we have one. I would be, you know, because there's, there's two immutable facts about Minuteman in Stowe. Number one, it is an extraordinarily high per capita, per student cost. And number two, everything passes. But I would give the voters a choice. Even on something that's $15,000 to $18,000 a year, I would give them a choice. How that plays out in a pandemic, I don't know. And I want, I want to talk to the town administrator about, I think we should talk to the town administrator about that. But I do want to say kudos to the school committee and to Dr. Buquillen for being here before the school committee votes on the ad alternates, giving us a heads-up about the 60-day window. Not necessarily, we haven't received that courtesy consistently from Neshoba. And I am very grateful for giving that on this occasion from you.
And I, I agree very much. Even though I, even though I may not be in favor of it, I agree with everything Jim said as far as giving us the, the heads-up. Because really, this is an informative session for us tonight. I don't think there's, until the school committee actually votes, there's no action for us to take. So, it's, unless anybody else has any other questions, or...
Well, I'll just say that I'm in favor, I'm not against the Dr. Buquillen's proposal. I agree with Ellen that it's, sounds like an excellent use of surplus from the, from the building project and a, you know, moment to seize the opportunity to leverage those funds to really get way more than they had before in this area. And, you know, the fact that our enrollment in the school is up shows that, you know, the new facility is very appealing, and that students are jazzed about going to school at a place that has great appointments. And, you know, why not have, you know, having students be jazzed to go to school is a good thing. So, I also admit I have a somewhat fatalistic approach to school expenses, that they're going to occur, and there's not a lot, we can scream and yell, but they're still going to get spent.
Yes, Alice?
Hi, can I, I just wondered if I could make a couple of comments? I might assist you. So, on the building committee as well, and Ed and Bob Girardi will tell you that I'm a nuisance on the building committee, because I'm the one who says, you guys have got to find a better way of getting us more money on this. We've got to have more money left over. And I will do it every time, and even if it's embarrassing to someone, I will do it. So, we've had those discussions. But I was actually one of the last holdouts on the school committee with regard to this project. And when I heard that the contractor was holding his price into January, that the interest rates were really low, you know, you add those things together, and then I went to the finance committee meeting of Minuteman, so they have their own finance committee too. In addition to building committee and school committee, I went to the finance committee meeting, and I listened to them talk about the financing of this, and the advantageous pricing, and the advantageous interest rates. I really couldn't in good conscience not vote to go ahead, because the opportunity won't be there in three months, you know? We'll just lose it. And then, you know, then you end up with a half of what you really should be doing. And as Ed said, you know, he's not making any promises, we're not making any promises about rental income, because you can't really promise about the future. And, and many promises have been made in the past that didn't come to fruition. So, there's some bad feelings, not from Minuteman, but from other incidents that have gone on. Not from Minuteman, but from other incidents that have gone on with regard to, you know, we're going to make all this money. So, we're not saying that we will, but we do believe that by putting the lights up, we may be able to realize some rental income. And so, that's the third reason why, that changed my mind was that. So, I was extremely conservative on this. I was much more conservative than almost anyone else on the school committee about this issue. So, and about everything else, frankly. I'm, I'm pretty liberal. I, I'm a tough purger. So, that is just a little bit of feedback to you from me.
You always seem to make sense, Alice.
Yeah, well, I was thinking of Utah. I really, I was thinking, Utah did things and say this, so.
You just know I'm a pain in the butt.
Can I, can I just give the select board one other piece of information you may not have known about? Is that currently, we have six hundred and thirty-four students enrolled in the building, as you recall, was designed for six hundred and twenty-eight.
Wow.
So we've already exceeded the design enrollment of the school. This past year, we had three hundred and forty applicants for a hundred and eighty slots. We have a waiting list right now, and even with COVID, we seem to be on a trajectory to beat or exceed last year's applications. And I would say eighty-five percent of the students that were enrolled this year were from our member towns. And when Belmont left, they gave up their member status and we turned away forty freshmen who want from Belmont. We, I take some sick pleasure in it, but, but I really don't. Because those, a waiting list is nothing to be proud of, you know? All it shows is that, well, you know, you can fill in the blank. But it's, it's something we're going to try to address and try to increase the capacity of the school over the next few years with some creativity and trying to leverage what we have for a beautiful campus. From a CTE point of view, we could easily hold eight hundred, but from an academic classroom point of view, we don't have that space. But, you know, we have a carpentry program, an electrical program, a plumbing program. And I'm working with the officers and the enrollment task force up in Minuteman to try and increase that capacity back to that eight hundred level, which is what we knew we needed to have. So, and that's with nine member towns, not sixteen.
We fought hard for that, too.
Yeah.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Well, thank you, Alice. Thank you, Dr. Buquillen.
Thank you all.
I'm sure you'll let us know when the school committee votes.
I look forward to reporting the project when it comes. It'll be fun.
All right.
Great. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a notice from the Department of Agriculture and, or Department of Agricultural Resources. Proposed purchase of an agricultural preservation restriction, i.e. APR, on farmland on Old Bolton Road, owned by Steve and Kristen Mong. And there is a very specific thing that I'm supposed to do here. It's not quite a public here. I'll just kind of describe it. It's not quite a public hearing right now. I have to read off a notice and then sign that we, I have read the notice. And then there's a second part to this that we would probably discuss, that is whether we want to waive the waiting period. But the first, first part is just reading the notice, signing it, saying that I've read the notice from the state. I've also been advised that I should probably ask if there are any questions on this. It's not quite a public hearing. It hasn't been advertised as such, but by doing that, I think that we cover all our bases. Denise has talked to, who was it you talked to today?
So, Maureen spoke with Ashley, who is the, let me just tell you her title. She is the APR acquisition planner for MDIR. So she is the one who gave us the specific instructions on how to move forward with this.
Okay. So, I will duly, do what I've been told to do. In compliance with general law C seven C, section thirty-seven, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, acting by and through its Department of Agricultural Resources, the department, hereby gives notice that it proposes to acquire an agricultural preservation restriction, APR, on real, on the real property identified herein for the purpose of protecting in perpetuity its superior and productive agricultural resources by preventing their conversion to other uses. The application received by MDIR indicates that the property is owned by Steve and Kristen Mong and consists of a parcel or parcels located on Old Bolton Road, as approximately represented on the attached map. The APR may encompass all our parts of the area shown. The current use of the property is primary for organic, primarily for organic vegetables. Following the recording of the APR, the use of the subject property is limited to agricultural uses, as more particularly set forth in the APR document, the general laws, chapter one eighty-four, sections thirty-one, and regulations of the department. Three thirty, CMR twenty-two point zero zero, et cetera.
Et cetera.
Et cec?
Et cetera.
What, what does that mean?
And the following.
Oh. And that's by the Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources. And so, having duly read that, are there any questions about that from the board?
A really small one. And I think this is awesome, because I love apple fields, but is the restriction specifically on, you know, perpetuity for organic farming, or is it just for farming?
I cannot answer that question.
I see Bob Wilber is, is Steve or, I don't see Steve or Kirsten.
And unfortunately, Ashley from MDIR is not.
Is not there.
On. She was hoping to make it to the meeting, but I don't see her on.
Well, Bob, you're, you're up on a lot of this, this stuff. Is that, do you know if it, it restricts the way the language is just for any farming, or does it have to be organic farming?
It's, it's for agriculture generally.
Okay.
And the property's five point two five acres, and the agricultural preservation restriction would be acquired by the state. It's primary, it would be primarily funded with federal funds through the Natural Resource Conservation Service, part of USDA, and the Stowe Conservation Trust. I'm the president of the Stowe Conservation Trust. Stowe Conservation Trust is providing the thousand-dollar local match requirement for this.
That's awesome.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Stowe Conservation Trust.
That's awesome.
Well, it's part of the Save Stowe's Farms effort that the trust has.
The, the parcel doesn't contain the farm stand, right? Because obviously, that we're talking about, I'm looking at the map.
No, this is behind their residence.
The parcel that's going on is just the farm, is the farm.
Just the back part.
Yep, okay. I just didn't know if it was divided into multiple parcels.
This is actually a parcel that's behind their residence, so it's further down the street.
It's further back, right.
And it's, it's off the street.
Gotcha.
Then there's an additional parcel that the town owns but leases to them, right?
Correct. That's behind the, that's the stand where you.
Megan, that's still convenient.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I know. I, yeah, I was just curious. Yeah.
Asking questions.
Can I add one quick thing?
Yep.
Very happy always to see an APR. They have, I don't know the intricacies of the details, but they have even more protection than your typical conservation restriction. And, you know, we're always so happy a shellburners protected by an APR. And it deserves our agricultural heritage because, as Bob has been saying for over twenty years, Stowe is the only town within four ninety-five that has a viable agricultural base. Isn't that correct, Bob?
That's certainly my opinion.
I would have heard you say that about two hundred times. All right. So, are there any questions or comments from the audience? Going once, going twice. I will now sign the thing that I'm supposed to sign, saying that I've actually done that. So really, what I'm doing is, I'm signing in compliance, I'm signing that what we have done is, I certified, confirmed the notice regarding the proposed acquisition for an agricultural preservation restriction was posted and published in the following manner. Notice was posted twenty days prior to this meeting on the town of Stowe's website and official posting board at the town building. I further certify that an announcement was held at the place, date, and time indicated in this notice. So I take it that it was posted twenty days ago. Correct? Notice was posted twenty days prior to this?
Yes, it should have been, yep.
All right. Just checking, I didn't, didn't know that.
You're signing it.
I'm signing. I suppose I could, does anybody have a problem with me signing?
He did all that you were supposed to do.
The second part of this is that if we wish, right now, there is a hundred and twenty-day waiting period, I believe it's on. And if we take action tonight and we are in support of this APR, we can reduce the hundred and twenty-day notice period prescribed for in the announcement to sixty days. So.
Yes.
So everybody's in favor of that?
Sure.
I don't see any issue with it. In that case, I'll accept the motion to do such.
I make a motion that we, we waive the hundred and twenty-day notice on the agricultural preservation restriction as presented to not less than sixty days. I just made that up.
Good judge. All in favor?
Aye.
Ananamous. This time it'll go to you first.
Oh, opposite of Claire.
And I think we can go into the town administrator's report while we're signing.
I just have two very small items for you tonight. One of them's not very small, but it's good news. So, the fiscal twenty books have officially been closed and free cash was certified this morning at two million, three hundred fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and ten dollars. So, we are now moving on to fiscal twenty-one and getting those months reconciled and getting that revenue reported. So, that's great news. I commend mostly Julie, the town accountant, for getting the reports filed as soon as she could, once the treasurer's office finalized their reconciliation. So that was really great. Moving on from that, I am getting the budget packages ready to be distributed for next week. Julie updated all of the necessary spreadsheets for me today. I'm working on my budget message, and that will be going out, as I said, probably by midweek next week. Budgets will be due back by the end of December, so that'll give folks plenty of time to prepare their budget requests. At this point, I'm not changing the format from the prior years. I just didn't have enough time to change the format. My hope would be to automate the process. You know, the biggest complaint that I've heard from departments, when I told them this morning at our department head meetings, the groan was very noticeable, that there's a lot of data entry on their part for prior years, what was requested, what was approved. There's nothing that carries forward. It's all manually entered. So, we're looking to streamline that process quite a bit. So hopefully, we'll get that in place for next year. But the budget process will be underway, and now that we have free cash, we can make some good recommendations that will go forward for town meeting. And that was all I have for you tonight.
All right. We could almost pay for Minuteman's lights.
Yes, we could.
Not suggesting, not making a motion.
All right. Next up, liaison reports. Let's start with you tonight.
Okay. So, a couple of things from the conservation commission. They have approved a new permit for the Lake Boone drawdown, where they worked with the town of Hudson's conservation commission to approve an identical permit. And that will extend for the same time period. So this is a first, and it'll make things easier for the Lake Boone commission. Apparently, the permit reduces the requirements with regard to private water supplies because the, it's, the drawdown has occurred now long enough that, for a number of years, that there seemed to be no water issues with, with wells. On the COVID front, the conservation department's kind of put new signs on the trailheads, reminding people to leash their dogs and wear masks. This is in compliance with a new order from the governor's office. And the third thing is that it is now hunting season, so remember to wear orange if you're in the woods. But Sundays, the animals have a day off and she can dress her up.
Don't wear antlers in the woods either.
No. So, community preservation committee met last night. They are going to, again in December, and, and get, they have a small, they have an application regarding the cane property, and I don't have the details of that under my hat. And then there will also be a meeting with, they'll, they'll hear from the town hall restoration committee in December. So, that's pretty much the news there. Smart is meeting on Thursday. Is it a meeting?
Jim?
I don't have much since our last meeting. The library building committee met. They do have a draft RFR, which Denise was very helpful in helping put together. The trustees are sort of finalizing the needs statement. They're, they edited the one from eight years ago. I think the biggest development is that the committee agreed, and I think it was inevitable, that there is not enough time between now and annual town meeting to hire a consultant, get a report, vet it in public comment, and get it to any town meeting. So we're not expecting any concept design for the library to go to annual town meeting in 2021. If there's a fall town meeting in 2021, that's a possibility. If there's a fall town meeting in 2021, that's a possibility. The only other thing is Thursday, I have the pleasure of spending three quarters of the day interviewing potential PFAS LSPs. If I want to spend three quarters of the day, I want to get into my liaison report, get credit for it. That's it.
Megan?
Excellent. So the town hall restoration subcommittee is meeting on Thursday via Zoom. We have a few things to discuss, including, well, I'm not sure what's on the agenda, but we're, we have a few things in the mix that I will be able to report, myself or Courtney will be able to report on better next meeting. Planning board is meeting tonight. I believe that tonight is the night they are opening the public hearing for Stowe House pizza, but it might be the next meeting. It might be next week. One thing that they were talking about though, and I sort of alluded to this earlier, is the, they have hired a consultant to work with them for zoning, to sort of beef up the zoning in Lower Village and whether or not they're going to, they have a couple of different options that they're putting before the planning board. But that consultant, given all of the feedback that the planning board gave to them and the final report that the Lower Village revitalization subcommittee presented last year, had sort of put together a packet for them and so was presenting that tonight at the meeting. The school committee met, they haven't all had a lot of meetings lately. Met last week? The fourth, I think. The fourth. They talked about the school building committee. Yep, and then, yeah. So they talked about the school building committee and then the Trittown meeting, the next one is going to be November 17th, so it's next Tuesday. It's hosted by Lancaster. Maureen sent out a request for any agenda items that we want to put on, if anyone has any of those. The one item that I have put forward on the agenda is to be allowed to speak. So if any of you know what had happened in the last Trittown meeting is that one of the selectmen sort of was speaking about a lot of his constituents and I sort of was a little caught off guard. And so what I have asked is that if there are constituents of ours in Stowe that are at Nishoba and if they feel strongly about one of the models versus the other, that I would welcome their input. So that I feel like I have heard all of the data. So if there are a lot of people who are saying one thing quietly, but there are, you know, a few people who are saying it loudly, I feel like it's important to make sure that we can respond to it. On that, I also, Trittown sort of, I don't know that it is doing what it was initially set out to do. It feels like the purview of the members has now sort of grown some arms that are not necessarily purviews that I feel comfortable with the board addressing. And so, so I'm not really sure what to do with that because I feel like a lot of the things that are showing up on the agenda, I feel pretty strongly that it's in the school committee and the administration's purview and it's not in our purview as elected officials. But I also don't feel comfortable speaking. Our board is one person? Like I can't, I'm not going to speak on behalf of the board unless I sort of had a quick conversation about that. And so, so anyway, that's where I am going into this next meeting. And so if any of you want to talk to me about it or if you feel strongly in one way, I have only been on this board for a few months. This is, I am new at this and if I'm doing it not correctly, I would like to know.
One of the things I'd suggest is that if, especially if there's something that they bring up that you're, you're not comfortable, you figure you should come to the board.
Yep. Just say that?
Say that.
Okay.
And then if you, you know, if they're looking for something at the next meeting.
Then I'll have come to this board and we'll have that conversation.
Bring it up. We can put it on the agenda. We can hash it out and we can give them our collective opinion.
Okay.
Or not.
Can I give you a little feedback on that?
Sure, absolutely.
So I think you're absolutely right. I think the original idea of Trittown was, especially as the budget season starts, get together, squeeze the administration for as much information as they can give us because the assessment always starts off up here, then whittles itself down and you try to get as up-to-date information as possible.
Okay.
That was the original idea. And, you know, that's legit because we pay the assessment. My perception of what you've been going through is that you're between a rock and a hard place. I think you're absolutely right that issues that are strictly within the purview, and you and I have talked about this a little bit, strictly within the purview of the school committee are coming up. The only problem is, this is just me talking, the school committee has a communications problem, clearly. And people are dying for another outlet. So it's like a steam pipe and it just, Trittown became an outlet.
Right.
Sounds to me like your plan is the best you can do. You know, I would, maybe this is cowardly, I would hide behind, hey, this isn't our decision. I have to give you some opinions, but it's their decision.
Right. I don't think it's cowardly. I think that's in the statute. I mean, like I think that's like, that is literally our role. And I, and I know that there have been other select boards in other towns where they have taken, they've gone above what their position is supposed to be. And I don't want to do that either, you know what I mean? Like I just, I don't want to step on the toes of, I'm in a complete agreement with you. I just, I think, I feel like.
Yeah, I mean personally, I'm not in favor of stepping on the toes of other boards, either the regional one or even in this building. Getting information, talking about it, ask some questions?
Yep.
Sure.
Yep.
Most of it through the town administrator probably. But, you know, I don't, you know, your plan sounds as reasonable as anything, but you are between a rock and a hard place. I would suggest that it helps to have an agenda item on these agendas to say, what does the board want me to say about this stuff?
Yeah, that's fine. Yep, that's fine. I would be happy to do that. I just, I feel so strongly, I feel less strongly about other representation that we have on other boards just because I feel like what it has become now is I am the representative of the Stowe Board of Selectmen and they're looking for like a response that is of the entire body. And I don't necessarily feel like that's, I don't feel like that's the position that I should be in, you know what I mean?
Who's they? The, the school committee residents?
No, no, no. The, the way, wow.
So if I can chime in, so I don't know that it's necessarily, anyone's looking for a response. I think, I think they're looking for more Stowe to join forces and support what the other two towns are moving towards. In our last meeting, I think both Lancaster and Bolton had their entire boards of selectmen on the Trittown and they very much took the primary role even though we were hosting it. I said the same thing to Megan and I had a meeting today with our four school committee members and I told them the same thing. My intention is to take a passive position in these meetings. And I said to Megan, if it gets out of control, I'm going to just get off the meeting because I don't think that that's our responsibility to, you know, continue to question remote learning versus in-person learning and in-person learning. It's great to have information and data, but we shouldn't be making that decision. That's followed squarely in the school administration and the school committee. And I think they're trying to get, you know, Megan to be like, yes, we agree and Stowe feels the same way and we just don't. So that being said, I think Lancaster is hosting next week, next week's meeting. And I don't think they will do what Megan did at the last meeting and quite frankly, stop the discussion when it got out of hand or started to get out of control. I think they're looking for that forum to fight. And I agree that, I don't know what the purpose of Trittown is, to be honest.
Even with the agenda, it doesn't look, even with the agenda. Even with the agenda that was sent out.
All right, the agenda's now focusing on specific operational items and I just think it goes well beyond an informational sharing purpose. I think we would be much better served if, if I had regular meetings with the two counterparts and the school administration and then reported back to you because I just feel that this is going down a very bad place, to be honest with you, with these meetings.
Okay, is it appropriate to respectfully say, for instance, I can't speak for my board, but I can say this, that we are not willing to meddle in the affairs of the school committee and the school administration. I mean, personally, I feel that way. I don't want to meddle and I don't think we should be making that decision.
It feels like we're fairly, I mean, I don't want to, we're not taking a vote, obviously, but like it seems like everyone's in a similar position.
Yeah.
You know, I think it would be fair if you said you've been hearing from certain constituents that they, that like more information, you know, something like that is appropriate.
Yeah.
You know, especially if you, if you put yourself out there to gather, gather data input.
Yeah.
Then you can funnel some of it into them and, you know, it's, it's not a position of the board. It's simply some of the information you've been hearing.
Yeah. I think it's less about the, I think my bigger question is whether or not we want to be a part of this if this is what it's doing. Like I don't know that I want to keep going to these meetings where they're screaming at the school committee because I feel like that's, that's doing a disservice to, I mean, it's A, a waste of my time to sit there for three hours and listen to it because there, it's the same thing over and over again. And it's, if it's not in our purview and this is what we're being asked to do and we're not getting anything out of it except that it's just a giant venting session for three hours, then I don't know. I mean, I, that's, that's sort of where I'm at after that last meeting because it felt like nothing got accomplished except that everybody, it was an airing of grievances. And then what?
And I don't think anyone came out of that looking good.
No.
I think it made everybody that participated in that meeting look bad because of what took place and the way it was shaping up and things that were being said. I think it just cast a very negative light on all the towns and the schools.
I mean, I was embarrassed. I know I felt like I handled it the best way I could, but I came out of that mortified that that happened on my watch and I don't, I just don't want to go through that again, you know? Because, because I really did feel blindsided by a lot of it. So anyway, that's my, that's my liaison report.
I, I mean, I just, my, my experience back in the day, you know, 10, 12 years ago when I was on Trittown, it was sort of what Jim was saying. It was really much more around having a civil discussion about what the school district was thinking about asking for from the towns. And we'd have a, you know, it was all three towns working together to say, you know, it was in the day, it was particularly, I mean, the time, the time period was after, a few years after the nightmare that we went through, which we were inches away from receivership, so we knew we had to be smarter about it. Lancaster was in a hole financially and they had, literally had no money to pay their fire department, much less the school district. So it was, it was a much more team effort to say, okay, let's be real, school district, school committee, you know, you can't be asking this for 5% increase or whatever. And I'm, I'm so disappointed because it really was, I found it a very productive and it would get into other things like, I mean, it was a little bit of a regional discussion around, what are you guys doing about this issue and that issue? It had nothing to do with school. I mean, there was other things, you know? So my feeling right now is I think it's totally something we should consider that we just say, you know what, you don't need to go. I mean, whether it's this meeting, you try it one more time and then say, you know what, maybe it, it needs a break.
And then we deal with our own school committee representatives and we deal with it in the way that we should be dealing with it.
Yeah. I mean, I think airing of grievances is actually legit. I remember, because I used to go to Trittown regularly and you would have an airing of grievances, particularly around communication issues. I alluded before to, you know, they wouldn't always tell us ahead of time. There were some, there were some healthy discussions around something like that and that's perfectly legit. But I do remember when I first got on this board, there was a select person, a selectman from Bolton, I'm not going to say any names, who would hijack the meetings. And I stopped going for a while because it was, it was a waste of my time. I enjoyed the cookies and the juice, but other than that, it was a waste of my time. And, you know, if, if that's what you want to do, if we're not hosting, I would support you completely. I think you've got to consider, even in our correspondence this week, we have more people writing in, what, what do we, what do they expect from us? What do we owe them? I don't know. I certainly think based on this discussion, you could say, if you choose to go, the Stowe Board of Selectmen is not inclined to second-guess the school committee on coronavirus. I do not, I carved out a few things. The whole building committee membership issue, which I don't even know where that is, I think that's something legit to talk about. But on coronavirus, I'm not going to say anything else. So.
We may start asking where the money went and what they're spending things on.
I think that's a fair question, right?
But it's asking, it's asking questions.
Right.
You know, it's, it's not necessarily making demands.
Right.
But I would say even at that, like some of those discussions I think are better served offline.
Mm-hmm, yes.
You know, me having a conversation, which I did, I had a conversation with the four school committee members. They're having their budget subcommittee meeting on Thursday and I've asked them, I want more specifics on the money that you've received for COVID. If you plan to request money, I want a detailed explanation. I want to know what it's for. I need to be able to defend how I'm giving money that was allocated to Stowe to the school when I don't know what you, you've done with your money or what savings you've seen. And I do think that that, because again, I feel like it's important to get the information, but then it's almost used against people in that sort of public forum. So I hope to get that information on Thursday from our two school committee members that are on the budget subcommittee and then I will share that with you all. I will say as far as the school building committee, that is done and over. They have put the school committee together and chose to put the Lancaster town administrator as the only TA on the committee as a non-voting member. So I express my displeasure with our school committee members about that. But that is over and done with.
All right.
Maybe we'll revisit it someday. It's, it's going to be a long, long process.
Yes, it will.
And so we'll have a conversation about that.
Sorry, I took up so much time.
And I thought we were going to be out of here 20 minutes.
Sorry. Yeah, but that was my correspondence. So now we can just get rid of correspondence because now I've dealt with everything.
Yeah. It's, it's good and, you know, that's it. I felt bad for you and Denise said you did a great job trying to keep things under control, so kudos to you.
I wasted over an hour of my life watching part of that meeting. There were a lot of turkeys and by that I mean the preening, that's what was going on. There was a lot of showmanship going on.
Well, that, I did say that to Denise as well and it was, it was hard to, I'm just not going to say the things I want to say, but anyway.
Yeah, we're being recorded.
It was very, I know. No, it was, it was difficult and I do appreciate you all saying that because it was a difficult position to be put in so early on in my tenure, whatever.
Just makes you wonder what you were doing.
I know. What did I get myself?
What'd you get? Anyway.
All right, Ellen.
Really briefly, the rec commissions new November newsletter is out, so they mentioned the gobbler. And also for people who might be interested in the ski program, they're still waiting to hear from Nishoba Valley if they're going to allow a ski program. So people should be watching the rec department's website for that. I've, council and aging meets this week, but that's Thursday. And the other thing I just wanted to mention about perambulation has started.
Oh, I thought he was weeding.
I know. We, we had our first day on Saturday, which was a much nicer day than we had any right to. It was gorgeous. And so if people are interested, they should contact me directly. We're trying to keep the group smaller because of COVID issues since we all have to wear masks outside and also driving a lot of cars around is, some of these places, there's not a lot of places to put cars, so. But contact me directly if you want to be part of the perambulation. There will be many days because we have, well, if we want to hit them all, 40 spots and we're down, you know, I think we have 33 to go.
We can do it. I have faith in us. We can do this.
Heck of a good start though.
But it's really, we had a blast. What's that?
We found the one that was underwater.
We found the one that was underwater. So now we feel that we can do anything.
So you're doing scuba now? You can extend it into the spring.
What's that? Scuba, yeah.
Yeah, we can extend it into the spring if we have to.
We could, yeah. It's not, but, but I really want to, I just want to get it done, honestly, you know?
Did you pick off the easy one? Did you pick off the easy ones, the ones that are on the roads?
Not even all of them.
No, we're, we're focusing on the corners first.
All right.
I mean, we did a couple on the road just because we were nearby some, but we really want to get the corners, of which there's, I think there's nine total, and we got five corners on, on Saturday.
Yeah.
We hope to get the rest, I think, I might get those numbers a little wrong, but we're trying to get the rest of the corners done this week, we're going out on Friday morning, so, so, that's all.
It's super fun.
Everything else is good.
All right.
When you don't do this, sorry.
You know, one of the things, I think we had in correspondence, but it was, we had two of our local volunteer firefighters that just graduated from the Fire Academy.
Oh, cool.
Firefighter Landry and firefighter McNulty, and a press release had come out from the Department of Fire Services, and so I thought that was good, you know, we'd prob, I didn't go back and check, but I'm sure there were a couple of the guys that we did, but what this is, is after they get trained up to begin with, to a certain level at the Stowe Fire Department, then they're eligible to go here and get a full certification. But part of it is too, that these guys do this all on their own time for no pay, so it's real, it's kudos when they, when they do it.
That's great.
And the only other thing is that there's, I believe it's either, I think it's next week, there's a Board of Health meeting, and I'm going to.
It's this Thursday.
It's this Thursday? God, I knew if I said it was next Thursday, it would be this week.
Only because I'm going to it, so it's this Thursday.
So, okay, then.
Meeting minutes.
Uh, meeting minutes. And we have one set of minutes from October twenty-seventh.
I thought they looked good.
They looked great.
All looked good.
I thought one type of office was true.
Of course you do.
If you didn't, we wouldn't believe that you read them.
I will give it to Maureen, an on has to get moved.
I thought that one too.
Which page is it on?
Page two.
Oh, on page three, there's, there is one misspelling, I was just going to let it go.
I hope we accept the minutes as amended.
I'm going to shame.
Hold on.
We have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did you vote aye?
I did.
Yeah, yeah.
Good. All right.
Now I think we are.
Uh, we have correspondence.
Correspondence.
Yes.
We do have correspondence.
There was a lot.
I dealt with all of that, no. I don't think there was anything in there that we didn't.
That we haven't covered already, that sounds like.
That we haven't covered, right? You, no?
I had two things.
Yep.
Two things.
But things for future agendas, number one, there was a dense GZA report about the Fire Training Academy in there, and I think we need something from the Board of Health or COCO or Denise or somebody.
Denise and I talked about that, we're, we're going to, I'm going to ask her to update us for the next meeting.
Because if I understand it, there's some good news and there's some bad news. And then, there was something in there about, well, and I think we all know, the MBTA has now made a proposal to their finance control board, severely cutting back service, eliminating weekend service, eliminating service after nine P.M., cutting back on peak hour service, canceling the acquisition of double deckers. I really would like to do something, either have Kate in, or, and there is a meeting of the 495 Metro West Partnership Transportation Subcommittee on December first. I'm happy to go, just keep an eye on it, but I mean, this is an issue I really think our board should take a stand on, because I'm starting to wonder why we pay an assessment for somebody's death.
And I totally forgot, that's part of my liaison, I should have, because I was at the Magic meeting this morning, and that was discussed and briefly presented, mostly in terms of its impact on this region, which is minimal. Weston doesn't get all their extra train stops anymore, but that was about the closest that it came to impacting us. But I did respond to the Magic and MBPC, it asked for comments to go to the T about these regional meetings they're having, so I wrote them and said, why are we paying this assessment when you guys are doing nothing for us?
Yeah.
So, I think there is some, I mean, there was some good news that's not part of the T things, but that there, there's the, the Jesse's part of some of the regional planning to, what they call it, connect town, cross-town connect, which we were excluded from by our choice, apparently, a little bit initially, but that we're trying to get back into to.
For the shuttle.
For the shuttle.
For the shuttle, but for other things. I mean, it's not just the shuttle, it's between towns, like, we don't really just want to go, because especially with the acknowledging that maybe transportation needs are going to be very different going forward, as people are working at home, so it's more transportation to stores and transportation to malls and, and whatever shopping there is. So, it's cross-town things, where we have, we have only been looking at getting our people to the train station, and maybe that's not what we need.
Right, right, right.
So, I meant to hook up with Jesse this afternoon to talk more about what he's been involved in, but I think that that might be a more productive way to, I don't know that we're going to have any voice on the T stuff, honestly, but I think there's things we could be doing.
I'd like to see us at least talking about it, and potentially taking, I, I agree with you, it, it won't be a press conference in the Stowe Board of Selectmen, but there's a lot of people in town who rely on that, and not just during peak hours. I mean, if you believe in green transportation at all.
Right.
This last mile, first mile stuff only works if the train runs.
Right, right.
And they're talking about basically trains not running, so.
Only not on the weekends and not at night, essentially, so, right.
Right. So, I, I think it's important that you, I'm willing to.
There is the regional hearing, that's not the, the one on December first, there's one sooner, and I thought I had it written down.
There's one tonight.
I said, I thought it was today.
Oh, was it today?
Yeah.
Okay, well, then that's why I didn't know.
They're talking about cutting service not just for the current lack of use, but sort of going forward several years, is that what I read?
Well, I don't know.
It says temporary, they're saying it's temporary.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're not getting revenue.
Well, yeah, I mean, I've, I've watched, I've seen empty trains.
Right, empty, right.
Car after car, and it's like, oh, there's a person, you know, so.
Yeah, but I also don't know.
And that's hard on them.
And that's fine, if, if that's the answer, but I don't know if they're cutting expenses. If I had to guess, they have not opened up the collective bargaining rabbit, they have kept the collective bargaining exactly what it is, if I'm guessing.
Yeah.
You know, I, and I, and also I am afraid, once you make changes like this, people get used to it, it's hard to get it back. So, this is something people care about this town, so I think we should just talk about it.
Well, why, why don't you send Maureen a note, and we'll see if we can't fit some conversational, you know, lay out what you're looking for, and we'll.
Yeah, I sent, I sent Denise a note, so.
All right.
Great.
If that.
If that's it, I'll accept the motion to enter.
My motion's still down.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.